...workshop. We need to organize this.
I thought you were going to say to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call is presented.
Me and Ron Hempton.
President.
President Sharon Council Harris.
President.
Vice President Rand Johnson.
President.
Counselor Tamika Jones-Williams. Counselor Charlotte Brooks. Counselor Nicole Deegan. Counselor Tori Monroe.
President.
Counselor Leana Rooker.
Here.
Our Solicitor.
President.
Our Finance Director.
Mr. Nick.
Thank you. Nickel. And our Task Leader. Our Engineer.
Yes.
Thank you. The President concludes the roll call for this evening.
Thank you. On the new business.
I have some, I see old business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you skip to new business.
No, old business is fine.
Okay. I'd like to exit the citizens' forum, be moved to the top so citizens don't bore head at both places so they don't have to necessarily wait till the end of the meeting to be heard. Two citizens are wishing to speak.
Yes, Counselor Monroe will have the, will make that adjustment to this agenda. So many residents wishing to speak, I see Ms. Claire Johnson.
Could you just talk about?
Yes, yes.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm going to make mine very, very short. There's some things that had been voted on, on the floor, and I'd like to get clarification of those things. I couldn't do it at the last meeting because we were at the end of, citizens were at the end. I noticed that you guys voted on a person to look for a search perm. Am I correct on that?
That is the recommendation is for a professional search committee to work.
Okay, I'm waiting.
Yes, the, in fact, the recommendation came from our Solicitor's office to have a professional search agency, which is not really an agency, it's a professional company that do law enforcement searches, and we're doing that for, replace for, for the new Chief of Police.
Did you recommend it to him in time? Do you recommend it to him now before the lawsuit's over?
Before you, before, before we have your response. I want to have, the lieutenant come and give that report or that information with regards to order for this meeting as well as other public meetings of this council so that there's no disruption of this meeting.
How is that a disruption?
This is also a workshop.
Yeah, but you can't, but you can't, Chief.
Yeah, and the chief should make the announcement, the mayor should.
Well, you can, Mayor, absolutely, but the lieutenant has the, the lieutenant, Mr. Mayor, the lieutenant, excuse me.
There is a more relaxed, no, in all due respect, there is a more relaxed protocol for caucus than for, from legislative, so it's more of a give and take.
Well, no, no, Mayor.
We have someone standing up here speaking. She needs to be quiet and tump and speak at her. She's not bothering me. But she's not bothering me.
We don't want disruptions, but it's not.
Yeah, but, yeah, this is a disruption, Mayor. It's not respectful, it is a disruption. I'm the chair, and if I have to be distracted from answering your question, that's a disruption. So, yes, you were going to come in.
No, you were telling us exactly why.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a best practice, it's a standard protocol for law, for police departments, not only here in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, but anywhere in the country. These agencies are professional, they are, they do just this types of searches, they do the qualifying, they do, they administer certain criteria and evaluations, they do it all, so they are, they are the ones that are professional, and they do this as a, for the.
So you're actually saying that this person.
Not a person, it's an agency.
This agency that would hold it all on legislative night, which was not on the caucus agenda prior to legislative night, but that would hold it on legislative night, that person has been hired already?
It's not, no.
That company that would.
We have not selected the company yet. Yeah, we'll be looking at how many that respond to our Solicitor is the one that's going to be securing that agency. We will review them, and then we'll make a choice, but yes.
And have you guys responded on its own?
None of that has been taken into consideration, it's premature for right now.
The, the, maybe the last question, maybe the last question.
Okay.
Have all seven counselors been involved in this process?
They will be.
So the actual decisions have not been?
Well, we haven't, we have not at all made any decision. We said that's the process.
You voted on it on the floor.
We voted on the process.
So have all of the seven counselors, they had not been involved in prior to the vote on the floor? Yes or no? I mean, that's my question.
Okay. Thank you. We don't have a answer. Yeah, I don't have a, just give it just one more. Thank you, thank you, Lieutenant.
Sorry, ladies.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Leana Rooker has been recognized. Leana Rooker.
Ms. Rooker, do you want to wait for the citizen who has submitted a?
It's with respect to what Ms. Johnson just asked about.
I would like to hear your answer if anyone else can.
So with respect to the search perm, the search perm, you just indicated that, quote, "that" perm will be recommended by the Solicitor, so when you indicated "that" perm, it gives me the impression that a perm has already been chosen. And it sounds like, I'm not done, I'm not done. Please don't interrupt me, please don't interrupt me. Let me finish.
There's no perm, there's no perm selected.
Let me finish, and then you have a time. No, I want you finishing in my entirety, please.
You're doing what you have to do.
I asked to finish, I did not ask to be interrupted. I did not ask, but I'm not finished.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Rooker.
So you can be able to answer everything that I have concerns about. So when you indicated "that" perm, it leads me to believe that a time has already been considered, and all seven counselors have not been involved. You also said that the Solicitor would recommend the perm. I personally, and I believe others on this council, would like to see at least three proposals from three different firms. That's what I am requesting along with all the counselors, okay? We're not working in silos. That's number one. Number two, with respect to whether or not this is a good time with the pending litigation to even consider searching for a police chief, is that even feasible at this point in time? Because we don't know the outcome of the pending litigation. Number three, based on this pending litigation, what are we doing to make sure we are able to be sustainable if an award is significant? What are we doing to make sure that we're going to be sustainable with respect to hiring a police chief? Because if we hire a police chief now and we have to take back our former police chief who should have never been fired in the first place, what are we going to do? How is that going to affect us financially? Again, we're not working in silos, I would appreciate if all counselors are involved in these discussions. Number four, there were two individuals, individuals that were interviewed for the position of Chief of Police. All right. Two, how did that happen if we don't even have the firm selected at this point in time? So if that happened, does that mean that some of the council members conducted these interviews? And if that's the case, that's inappropriate, and the individuals who were interviewed should be omitted from the process because it is now flawed.
Are you finished?
No, I got another plot. Okay, come on. Another plot. Now I'm done.
To your first question, Counselor, there has not been an agency selected, to my knowledge. There has not been a determination without the full council being involved in the process. Secondly, when that agency is selected, each counselor will have an invitation for that review. The Solicitor will be front and center on this process. Your second question, could you repeat your second question because I didn't jot them all down? Your second question was?
Well, Al just responded with you.
No, 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 no. Your second question, what was your, what was your second question?
You said the counselors will get an interview, will get an invitation.
We won't have an executive session.
No, no, what you said, we would get an invitation to interview the firm. I just requested that at least three proposals are presented before the entire council.
We may have, we may have more than, we may have.
Not one.
Counselor, we may have more than three.
But that's not what you, that's not what you're saying.
Counselor, I don't want you.
That's not what you're saying.
I don't want you to construct a, a response to me by saying you believe, you heard, you know, when that is not true.
You just said when the firm is selected, all the counselors will get invitation to interview the firm. That's what you said.
Well, that is absolutely true.
So that means one firm.
No, it does not mean one firm.
So let's agree that.
It does not mean one firm.
Then let's say.
Any number that the Solicitor recommends, every counselor will be invited to that process.
So it's the number that the Solicitor.
It doesn't, it doesn't, you, you, you're creating fabric, you're fabricating information that's, that is not.
I'm going on what you just said.
That is not what I said.
You just said that Solicitor will pick a number.
Okay, Counselor, I did not say that.
Yes, she did.
Counselor, I did not say that.
Can we agree that we will, we will engage at least three firms for consideration?
It could be four, it could be five.
Okay, but it's at least, that's at least three.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Four or five is at least three. I'm trying to help us move along.
Counselor, they're not, they're not going to split hairs about whether it's three or five, the answer, I've answered your question. As far as the, we cannot discuss the legal issue involving the former chief, so I will not give any information or discuss, open up the floor.
I didn't ask for the session on the day.
Excuse me, excuse me, you asked about.
Is it feasible to hire a police chief at this time by the nation's?
And the answer is.
That's the question.
And the answer is the business of the borough has to be conducted, and that, that means getting a new Chief of Police in place to do the protection and to take care of the business of law enforcement as it is designed by this council.
But you said it would be, you said it was lying to pass. You're trying to say that's.
So, so, so that's, so that's what, that is the process? I've answered your question, that's the process.
I accept it as you don't know.
You know, I would like to know where this is coming from, what people are saying that they were interviewed.
Yes, that's the other question, no one has done that.
Raheem Landon and Jamison Rogers.
I don't know the person.
Raheem Landon and Jamison Rogers.
Were interviewed by whom?
Interviewed by whom? They weren't interviewed by me, Counselor Johnson, I've never heard the names before. Unequivocally, those names have never been introduced to me, nor, 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 and I'm not aware of any other counselor interviewing anyone for Chief of Police.
Why don't we ask Charlotte and Selene? We were a firm on Columbia, Ms. Ladd workshop too. We left early, 1:00.
Okay. For Ms. Angela Lee, would you come to the platform?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, I was going to speak about the citizens' forum again, and why it wasn't at the beginning of the meetings before. So when I was looking at my previous agendas, I saw that nine meetings, the citizens' forum was at the end, and only four, they were at the beginning. So I need to know since this was a surprise tonight, that it's at the beginning, is this going to continue, or is it just a one-time thing? So, is this new?
It's never been.
It's going to be at the beginning for now, huh?
And it may be an opportunity for after too, if there's, if a resident has something that they want to share personally, you know, something, something that involves them personally.
All right, because I looked at the agenda and I said, if I have to stay here until 9:00 or 9:30 to speak, maybe I'll just call. Okay, that was my concern, because I looked at the agendas, and after February 17th, the forum was at the end, right before the adjournment, so that was a concern. And my other concern, that when those citizens' forums were changed, they seemed to be no Zoom or audio for the residents, pieces were missing, and when it involved the chief who we all support, that was missing too. So I don't know whether they can go back and get that, but I looked at that, a lot of that's missing.
You mean there's censorship?
Yeah, it's, a lot of the, it's like someone edited some of the videos.
Censorship.
Especially in regards to concerns and support of the chief. So I'd like someone to look at that, because it doesn't match what the citizens felt.
You mean you want somebody to fire Garrett Ford?
I want, I want full disclosure.
Full disclosure, good.
Yeah. My next concern, I don't know what this is in 800 block of Yacon, I don't know what this is in the 800 block of Yacon, but my daughters had been driving, and I was driving with her, and we got in the center of the block, it dipped and banged underneath the car, so I don't know whether that's a sinkhole, it's not a pothole because it doesn't have that crumbly stuff in it, so I want someone to engineer or someone to look at that block.
You have spoken to that at the last.
Okay, it's two, it's two there, and we just got the car, so. The other thing, yesterday, I was taking my aunt with my cousin to the hospital, and she lives in the 1,000 block of Bell, is a temporary speed bump there, someone stole a piece of that.
What?
So it's a, it's gone, it's made out of rubber, so it's only half of it left, and it's not in the direction that it should be, it's crooked, so I don't know whether that'll be a hazard, and I almost tripped over it trying to get her into my car.
Where was that?
It's in the 1,000 block of Bell, so someone needs to check that out. Also, my final thing, I looked on the borough website, I did not see the March or April minutes, so I want to know if they've been approved, and if they have, how long is it going to take them to go away? And that's it. And as always, supportive of the chief, and I hope that eventually we all can get along and get things done around here before I turn 70. Thank you.
Now for old business.
So I do, I think there was a question about when minutes would be posted?
Yeah.
That's pretty simple. We have everybody here who's involved, are we able to answer that question?
Mr. Johnson? I will call Mr. Corr tomorrow morning.
What do you have to do with the minutes? The minutes? The minutes?
The minutes are missing from, from the website.
Right. Do you think that's complete? Because you're the manager. Manager and secretary.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, Counselor is asking me a question. Counselor, what is the question?
So are you saying that the minutes are complete and they were submitted to Garrett Ford, the webmaster, and to get you to upload them to the system, is that what you're saying?
I was saying, it's mine's come to you.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Yes, 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 yes. You're talking to me, right?
Yeah, well, someone was talking, and I didn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I was unaware that the minutes were not posted. It's my impression that once we approve the minutes, that they're posted immediately. So my response to the question is that tomorrow morning, I will talk to Mr. Corr and double check and make sure those minutes are posted, and ask him for an explanation as to why they were not posted.
But those minutes had to be amended, so were the amendments performed on the, on the minutes?
I do not believe that the minutes that they're speaking of were amended.
No, no, there were several minutes, several of the minutes had been amended, several ones.
I think that Council President spoke to the fact that everything has been recorded, and you responded that, you responded to the fact that, no, 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 I didn't say that, so forth and so on, and she replied to you that the minutes are recorded, and my assistant takes, she, she receives the minutes directly from the video.
So we made a vote to accept the amendment as amended, are you saying that we're not amended?
No, ma'am, I'm not saying that. The question was, are the minutes?
You can't change the minute.
Can't change.
Yes, that's what I mean. We voted to amend the amendment.
You cannot change the factual content, you cannot change the factual content of the meeting, because you disagree with it.
We asked for corrections to be made.
You want it, you want it, you want a data change.
I can't talk to someone with a child.
Yeah, yeah, you, you want a data change, and those recordings, and those minutes as recorded, as factually recorded, as excerpt from the recording will stand, because you disagree, does not mean we go in and change it because you disagree.
Why is garbage? I'm not open up if, if it's on the recorder, it's out, we'd like to hear the recorder, because I just hear.
You have opportunity to come up and listen to recordings.
We voted for the minutes to be amended with the changes that we voted on. Now you're saying something different. So I guess the simple answer, Ms. Lee, is that the, that either Mr. Corr did not upload them when he was supposed to, or the amended minutes were never sent to him, either way, maybe or maybe not, will our borough mayor forget back to you? Um, okay. I have a, I have a question if no other citizens are. The minutes have to be sent.
And the April minutes will not be.
They have to take some information. They have to.
And the April minutes will not be up until April.
That's what it is about. Yeah, we have to make up minutes, let's make one.
We have recorded, we have.
What else did you say in the meetings? So speaking of meetings, the, I'm asking to be recognized, so the, I've noticed on one of the neighborhood social media platforms that a specific counselor has been in repeated violation of the social media policy that you, are you listening to this? There, there, Council President and next, there were repeated violations of the social media policy, including calling residents trolls, and idiots, and leprechauns, and some other things that was on, posted on Nextdoor, and I'd like to know what the remedy is for counselors who are in repeat violation of the social media policy.
So was it gay?
So actual question.
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of any social media postings, so I cannot speak to that.
Would you like to make any screenshots? I would like to, however, my question would be, what are the remedies for repeated violations of the social media policy?
We have not adopted a social media policy.
At the best of times, what do you think?
We had consideration, we have consideration.
So we don't have a social media policy?
Excuse me, Counselor, there were submitted in your package of information for counselors, two sample sets of information from different municipalities.
No, it wasn't.
That were being, that were being recommended for your consideration at this workshop meeting.
That was, no, we.
That was a motion to review what policy can be implemented in Yacon Borough. We have not authorized the Solicitor to formulate a resolution based upon those two sets of recommendations. After you review them, parts of them may be accepted, may fit Yacon Borough, may not. That motion was simply to approve the review of those other two municipalities in western Pennsylvania that may be a good policy as, as the PSAB had reviewed them and recommended them. We have not adopted a social media policy.
I guess I would want to add, I.
All right, but we would look forward to your consensus as to what.
It says right here, and first, potential violations of this policy may be reported to the Borough Council President, who in consultation with the Solicitor will plan the next steps in a timely manner to address the potential violation. Violations of this policy may result in a warning shall be given by Council President or Vice President, a public censure of the public official as decided by a majority of Borough Council, a civil action to recover the cost of investigating and documenting any violation of this policy. That is what was voted on after the last.
That is new.
Yes, it was, it's right here, it's right here, this is what was said.
You are misinterpreting, you are misinterpreting the motion.
You know what, my public school education is not serving me well tonight.
Was anyone else at that meeting who voted on their social media policy?
Presumably that I thought it was adopted, but I just don't.
But we, we. I just voted on it, right? It was a motion or inspiration to adopt the social media policy?
Okay, for the workshop, this is what, it should be discussed in this meeting, and then recommendations, what will be adopted or accepted from those recommendations.
So if someone's.
It has not been, it has not, he had no resolution number. It has not been designed by the solicitor for a policy for Yaden Borough. It has not been formulated.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, your report, please. Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Mayor held the citizens' forum on Thursday, May 3rd, which was the first one of the quarter.
Did I say May 3rd?
Did I say May 3rd? Uh, sorry, I meant March. That's the type of, uh, March 3rd, um, which, uh, thank you for that, Madam President. Um, the other three will be June 2nd, September 1st, and December 1st. We had Jack Stolstein as well, Senator Anthony Williams. Uh, second thing to report, uh, Saturday, April 30th, 2:30 a.m., outside the 7-Eleven, 7-Eleven at Meyer Church, there was a, another attempted carjacking. The victim reportedly fought back against the assailant. The assailant fled into another waiting car. So this is the fourth carjacking or attempted carjacking so far in 2022. Oh, last year we had six for 2021. So we're well ahead of last year's pace in carjackings, which is a very traumatic situation year. All right, so that type of serious crime seems to be going up. On same morning, uh, Saturday, April 30th, around 1 a.m., on the corner of Church and McBay, an order crashed into the side of the home, that, that resident's home, severing gas lines. There was a stench of, uh, a high stench of, uh, gas in the air. Thankfully, the family was not home. They're vacationing. Otherwise, they probably would have suffered injury. Uh, their immediate neighbors had to be evacuated due to the dangerous, uh, gas, uh, main, uh, mainline gas break. Upon returning, the homeowners had to be relocated, um, until a permanent fix could be, uh, done in their home. And I'm proposing that the borough donate some financial, um, uh, some finances to help them, uh, in that transition. Lastly, uh, I'm asking for an unbanning of the hiring freeze right now. As mayor, I believe there's a hiring freeze. We, we asked for part timers. Uh, council voted against it. Uh, and we asked, we asked for, there were five full-time officers down and there's been no movement there. What I've done is I researched some recent articles of outlining the problem of hiring, uh, recruiting, uh, and maintaining, uh, police in this area. We had the, the first article, the Attorney General came down, uh, Josh Shapiro met with the mayor, affiliated the police chief, and he said there's almost 2,000 officers down in the state. Uh, the next article talks about, uh, Mayor Kenny requesting the Civil Service Commission to relax some of the residency requirements so they can hire police officers. Uh, the other two articles shows the, the difficulty to maintain police officers and to recruit them. It's not an appealing job, uh, today. So Philadelphia, the police chief, uh, Daniel Outlaws, said in two of these articles that Philadelphia has 600 officers down. Right now, except the police of the 260, they have 50 officers they can't hire, uh, those who, uh, uh, they can't hire them fast enough, those are on the force quit. Uh, there's a problem with policing around the country and in our area. I was just talking about it, uh, at the DRPA, uh, how also it's not competitive in certain places, don't pay enough. And, uh, uh, we have a problem of, of recruiting police. And it's not a situation that we, we could be choosing right now if people, uh, uh, signed up for that, for that job. And my fear as mayor, and we have, uh, my job's to keep us safe, is that with this man, we're in the process of dismantling the police department. Now, I understand, uh, name tags and decals and all those, and they're really nice, but the main issue that we should be focusing on is getting our police up to full staff. And once you start eroding that, it's hard to catch up. So under normal circumstances, some of the things we've undertaken would be difficult enough. But in this atmosphere, it's going to be hard to, uh, to, uh, catch up. It's not that we can major magic wand. We gotta know what we're doing. If we don't know what we're doing, acts of people, no. There's a problem in our area. We can't hire almost every police department.
Okay, not in the mic, I'm there.
Okay, thank you. Well, every police department is undergoing some very, very serious issues. So I ask my colleagues to really consider that. Um, I was talking to, uh, Lieutenant Burns today to kind of get a, uh, an assessment with other neighboring boroughs. They're, they're going through the same thing. Right now, we have one part-timer. They don't want the job. Uh, and those who are part-timers are not part-timers for long. They get hired right away. Uh, Lamson, I don't believe, that's two?
Yes.
Two part-timers? Uh, that, that, we, we can't get part-timers. So it's not like you can choose and like, whoa, let's, 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 let's wave a magic wand. We'll just fire police, do this, we'll get people, we'll hire firms. People want now. This is not the environment that we're in. We can hire all firms we want. We need police and we, we should keep the ones that we have. So it's not, you know, this is a crisis. It's a crisis of staff. And I want to sound an alarm so that my colleagues understand the decisions, the ramifications of the decisions that they're making. There is my report, Madam President.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, yes, counselor.
Um, how many full-time police officers do we have this time?
We do that, we, we go through this.
Can you add 20 how many?
Give me the mic. I believe we were allowed about 21 and we had, we're five down. What, so do the math. We need five full-time police officers.
So you have 17, Mayor?
Well, 16, is it 16 or 17?
16 or 17.
Seventeen.
We're 17.
So the math, oh, so we, we were allowed at 21. We're five down, but we, we go through this every meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
16 with one part-time? 16 full-time, okay?
Um, Mayor, with all due respect, I wish you would thoroughly understand, it is not nice to have decals on a police department. It is essential. And I don't know why, this doesn't seem to be important. Um, it is not nice for police officers that have name tags. It is essential that they have name tags. It's part of a unit.
We, if we had, listen, if we had police, maybe we could put a name tag.
We do have police. And they've been walking around here for over two years without the necessary equipment.
Can I have a question as well?
I'm not allowed to. I'm not allowed to.
I have a question as well for the mayor's report.
For the solicitor, um, you want to direct to?
This is solicitor. I'd like to know, um, the mayor said he's proposing the borough donate $5,000 to the panel. Is that inappropriate of the borough? And would it, would it present, um, would it present a problem if it were to reoccur more than once, twice, or three times?
I missed the first part.
The question is.
So I, I would like to know how this, that our borough manager gets, gets his question, gets put before a counselor when we, when I was still asking the mayor questions about the police department?
Because he had to ask before you.
No, no, man, this is still in the same line as the police department questioning. Mr. Johnson has decided to change the subject. Mr. Johnson has decided to.
Stop my comment, stop my comment.
You asked me, could you ask the question?
Well, you don't hear me when I ask me.
Before, before you said anything.
You don't hear me when I ask. Mr. Johnson is the borough manager. I am elected official.
The manager has the floor and the.
I am elected official. I should be in court with respect to being able to answer your question.
That is not correct. You are incorrect, counselor.
You are changing the subject and moving on.
He's not changing the subject. He asked with this question.
I have a question about the mayor's report.
That preceded, excuse me.
The mayor's report is mandatory.
Counselor. You are out of order, counselor.
This is a workshop where this is a.
You are out of order.
The borough manager is out of order. He should defer to the counselor.
Could you ask me a question about?
Maybe he was surprised me to think about that question.
That was first on the mayor's report. Could you please respond to that?
That was the part, that was the part I couldn't hear. Can you say the first part?
Let me restate it. The part of the mayor's report, the first part, he made a recommendation and the, and the manager asked me, is that permissible? Is that permissible? And I said to him, to ask you. That was before the mayor finished talking about the decals and, and what Counselor Johnson had redirected to him. So I want to, I want that answer because it, because it is, because it is, it is extremely important that we don't set a precedent at the mayor's recommendation at this meeting.
And we should also set a precedent of letting the counselor attack the mayor with allegation and move on and say, I am taking you. And if you're bad, I just did it.
They are allegations.
They are allegations.
They are not allegations.
And you did not permit him to respond.
I have been true. I have been. Driving around this town without number of decals.
We answered his question a number of times. If they have been ordered.
They are not allegations. And you know, and you know what you're saying is they lie.
Let me respond to that.
You lie.
Let me respond to that. I never said that decals wasn't important. I never said that badges, name tags wasn't important. I can, I complied to that with that to make sure that that was in order. I did that. Everyone can now have, and that was, uh, an oversight in that, that was part of our policy as officers left or came back with the influx. It's something that dropped off a little bit here and there, but we, we did it, Madam President. What do you want us to do?
Long overdue. Thank you.
So that's more important than putting, uh, uh, officers, uh, in, in the borough. That's more important. That is my point. You've made that more important. You've made name tags more important. You've made decals more important than protecting our borough with, with officers on the street. You got, you, you got carjackings going through the roof. You haven't commented on that. What you've commented on is name tags. That's what's important to you, not the safety of our residents. Name tags is what's important to you.
All of it is important. All of it.
I want.
That's what you've underscored, name tags, not the crime, not the lack of officer. You voted to, for cessation of hiring.
Okay.
In lieu of name tags. Name tags are more important than putting officers in this borough.
Temporary, okay, excuse me.
Now I respond, thank you.
I don't know, Matt has a question.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a comment with regards to the mayor's report. So then hopefully we could kind of put this to bed regarding the name tags and, and the decals, and I'll tell you why. When we were reviewing the code of conduct that this borough established for the police department, that the council has the authority and only the council has the authority to approve a code of conduct and a standard operational procedures that involve our police department as, as provided in all of the police training, when, when officers go and go through their training and they're given information, uh, that they will carry out in their duties, working for whatever municipality there is. It is extremely important to have a standard protocol for officers. Why, why does an officer need a name tag?
No, we aren't arguing that they don't. They went and ordered.
You made a false argument. I'm for name tags. I'm for decals. I don't know what you're talking about. I'm for name tags. You're for decals.
Mayor, I have the.
You're making a full dichotomy. That's not right. We're for name tags.
Mayor, I have the floor.
Can we get you some business that will represent the borough outside?
Okay, Ms. Johnson. So if the, if the standard code of conduct that governs our police, if someone, we had a resident that gave a report, couldn't tell who the officer was because there was no name tag.
She asked.
And, and the, and the person, we said, well, why aren't there name tags? And that's when Counselor Johnson.
Have the name tags.
Bravo, bravo. Excuse me, would you, would you let me?
Everybody has a name tag. Why are we stuck on this?
Please do not, please do not interrupt.
Everyone has a name tag. Why are we stuck on this?
Because the question is, why weren't there name tags?
Doesn't it matter?
If you had.
And the manager at the last season.
So, so guess what? So guess what? If there's an issue, if there's an issue with the police. Would you be quiet, please? If there's an issue with the police officer in this town.
They had a name tag.
And you can't respond to it because you don't know.
Everybody has a name tag.
That was not the proper conduct.
Well, well, first of all.
I know you want to just blow it off.
First of all, that's a lie. Every person here, whether they have a name, they all have name tags. Whether you have a name tag or not, we know who the officers are. There's no one that's ever been brought to me that we could identify an officer. That's ridiculous.
Mr. Mayor is not ridiculous.
It is, because we can identify every officer on this force.
You can, but what about the stranger?
When they come to us, we, we, yeah.
What about the resident?
Yeah, we know who they are. There's a million ways for a record to, to identify an officer. You got a license plate, you got description, you got time of day, you got 911 police calls. There's a million ways to identify an officer.
I have the mic, Mr. Mayor. No, give me the mic. Give me the mic.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. I'm not. I'm not giving you the mic.
The meeting is adjourned.
The meeting is not adjourned.
It is adjourned.
It's not. It even fucking needs a vote. No, it's not. You know why? Put your shower pants up. She said, she said up here and talked about the authority of council. This council right now is a trifling council. What about the garbage that you allow to go on the borough's website? And you have the nerve to think you have some authority over the police department? You're a joke.
Mr. Box, book and book shop.
I said, I have a name tag. I have a name tag. I'm not doing it right. When the police come like you are, I hope they leave the name tag.